Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Okay, it is now eight seventeen and there being a form of council. I now would like to open this meeting on what's today's date?
Thirteenth.
September thirteenth at eight eighteen. And I just want to say good morning to all of you. We are very thankful for what we're doing here in the city of Monroe. And just it's so neat to be able to have this opportunity to be with every one of you again today, talk about and cast vision for the city, work closely hand in hand with the council. It means a lot to be here. So before we get to more, we're going to go around here to council and just opening comments for this morning and starting with Councilman McGee. Oh, by the way, council, we're going to try and leave the mics on today, okay? And then please speak into the mics.
Well, good morning. Happy Friday. It's a pleasure to be back here to continue to work as a collector for the betterment of our city. Yesterday was amazing. I think we got a lot of things accomplished yesterday, a lot of great conversations, a lot of great information shared. And I look forward to even more of that today. You know, just kind of thinking about what we talked about yesterday is, you know, how are we perceived in our communities? How are we perceived in our jobs? How do we, how are we perceived by each other? I think leading with that perspective, I think will help us to lead the right way. You know, we are servant leaders. We are servants to our community, servants to one another. I think with that, leading with that in mind, I think it's okay. So I would like to foster that type of mindset today, leaning into that a little bit more today and really challenging ourselves to really think outside the box, think more forward thinking for our city, you know, more innovative and try to figure out, as Mr. Watson said, how to make Monroe great and to continue on that pathway and really, really help us to be the best city in the state. And I thought you could do that. Like I said yesterday, I've got the best staff in the country. And so with that being said, let's get to work.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Thompson.
I think one of the things we learned yesterday is that we're in a unique position in that we have an opportunity now to try to control how we grow, where we grow and get ahead with our utilities. We've had good stewards of our utilities in the past that have left us in this position of right now where we can move forward and try to be forward thinking like they were. And hopefully twenty years from now, people will look back and look at some of the decisions that we make in these next two days and be thankful that we were forward thinking and we were trying to take in what staff is saying. We have absolutely bar none the best staff in the world. So I appreciate the opportunity to come here and listen to all this information.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Thompson.
Yes, I stand over here just so I can see everybody. Yesterday was so encouraging. I think everybody would agree we were able to get so many things accomplished and it was safe to begin this morning and I wholeheartedly support it. I believe everyone in this room loves our community, wants to see it move forward, wants to be a part of that process. And we just need to build upon that and collectively as a council. And I don't have all of your emails, so I'll just say thank you to the whole group today. Thank you for everyone who's had a part into yesterday and today, to our administrative staff, our folks who have just organized this whole meeting, to my fellow council members. It's just an honor, again, an honor to be here and an honor to serve and to be a part of making these decisions. I left here yesterday thinking we accomplished so much and the spirit and fellowship was just excellent. So I'm sure today will be the same and I look forward to that being the tone of things going forward. That's the big takeaway for me. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Carr.
Good morning. Good morning. This is very bright and early. The only thing that could be better is if this were the third such event that we had had during our tenure, but you can't change the past. So we made more advances yesterday, I think, than in our entire first year on council and that is very encouraging. Thanks to all of you and I look forward to talking about downtown events today that are near and dear to me and hopefully we'll talk some about the airport and possibly some EDC issues.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
Good morning. Ditto. To be really honest with you, I wasn't too excited about coming yesterday. I'll be pretty honest. But after the morning kicked off with everything focused and simple, it yet gave me a right frame of mind and it was all up front there. We discussed some very important issues. I liked the way we took them apart, dismantled them and built them back up. I think some very important decisions were made. If you stop and think about it, water sustains life, so that was very important. As all the others is. So we're in the process of really rebuilding Monroe and finding out what it's going to be and how it's going to be and we all have an important role in that. So I'm excited about it now, fully involved. I look forward to us working together and I do appreciate all the staff does. So we will continue. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seriously, as you can tell, staff, that council is very grateful for you. I don't think it's an understatement and it's not pandering at all to literally say we literally believe that y'all are the best staff in the entire country. We all believe it. Every single one of you have a unique perspective to bring. We want to hear you. We want to move Monroe forward. We have index cards on your tables today, okay? After lunch, we will start engaging a little bit more, not just in information, but a little bit more in the direction of the city as a council and we want input from you guys as well, okay? You don't have to put your name on that index card, okay? But things that matter to you, things that you would like to see and even questions that you have for us, you can do those as well, okay? So around lunchtime, you can feel free to come and bring them back right over here by my seat and then we will address those and we'll go through and be open and honest in our vision here for Monroe. So once again, thank y'all and I turn it over to Ms. Mandy Watson.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for those remarks. Yesterday was very encouraging. When we left here, I received several phone calls from individuals that were in attendance yesterday and they were all excited. They were excited about the future of Monroe and what that could mean. They were excited for the direction that you gave yesterday, your engagement and your interaction. And yes, staff, thank you so much. There's staff not here this morning that was here yesterday, especially a lot of our water folks. We need to make sure that they understand how important they were to us and to the discussion yesterday. So Scott, please pass that along. Couple of housekeeping things before we get started. For those of you who were not here yesterday, the restroom facilities are out those doors in the back, all the way down to the other end of the hall. And I did learn that through these doors or this door over here, there are a set of restrooms in the corner over here in the back. So feel free to use those as necessary. We have snacks out here. There's still breakfast in the catering kitchen. Lunch will be served at twelve. And please let us know if it's too warm or too cold in the room.
It's too warm.
Too warm.
I'm on it.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure we get it right. Let me, let me start by, before we, before we introduce the topics for this morning, let me, let me quickly.
Mark? Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we go ahead and excuse Councilman Anderson?
Okay.
Sure.
I made the motion to excuse Councilman Anderson from the meeting in reference to...
Have you opened the meeting and declared a forum?
Yes.
Yes.
He did.
Okay.
He did. He did a good job.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say "yes" again.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Let me, let me briefly recap the business of yesterday before we get into the topics for today. As you would recall, yesterday, we started the morning by a very engaging presentation by Junior Naime, who came to the United States on a scholarship from Cameroon, Africa, to play soccer and had a very interesting story to tell us, but also challenged us and I think really set the tone for the day. He challenged us to really have the perspective of, you know, how do other people see us as a city? And how do we see ourselves? And how do we want to be seen or perceived? It was, it was very engaging, very powerful message that he delivered earlier. We spent the majority of the morning talking about financial matters. We went through the city financials, the receipts, where does, where does our revenues come from? What are the sources of those revenues? What do they look like and what have they looked like over time? And it started telling the story. It started telling the story about Monroe and the growth that we are experiencing and the positive economy that Monroe has. We then went into a presentation from Taxi Administrator Van Arrel on the property revaluation process, incredibly important. I cannot understate, overstate the importance of that process and its impact on our revenue streams in the future. And this year, we will, we will hear more about that topic than you ever wanted to ever hear about it, but it is important and there's some strategic decisions that will need to be made. And yesterday morning was all about informing city council and starting that, I'll call it the education process in that, so that you are in a position to make the very best decision possible for the city of Monroe. We then heard, the rest of the day was devoted to all things water resources. We heard the Water Resources Rate Study, which presented a number of items. Among them was a tiered water rate structure. Monroe has historically had a single rate structure. So what does a tiered rate structure look like and what are the impacts of a tiered rate structure on the users or subscribers to that service? And we heard information on the system development fee. That led us into a discussion also about the capital projects that Water Resources is facing currently and in the near future. At lunch, we heard from an economist about the state of the local economy. Again, he painted, he painted a picture for us of where Monroe has been, where it is at now and what does the future look like. And, and it was very encouraging, very encouraging. I think you could say that he was high on Monroe. Then again, in the afternoon, we ended with a lot of capital construction projects and issues in, in the Water Resources Department, not least of which was the wastewater treatment plant construction project. So let me, let me recap at the end of the day, the direction that city council gave regarding the issues with, or the referencing the water rate study and the construction project at the wastewater treatment plant. So with regard to the water rate study, city council devoted to implement the tiered rate structure. As you recall, fifty-five percent of our subscribers to the water system use less than four thousand gallons of water a month, okay? And, and the way this system is set up right now, regardless of the amount of water you use, everybody pays the same rate. So we will start recognizing the differences between those who use less volume and those who use more volume. The, the city council directed that those rates would be effective, rate changes would be effective on January the first and that between now and then, we would have a public information campaign to make sure that everybody is aware of those changes and how they will be impacted. City council also directed that we begin the process of updating the system development fee. There is a formal process that has to be gone through for that, forty-five days worth of public notice, public hearings, those types of things. The target date is January the first to implement the new system development fee. And we will be working through that timeline and scheduling all of those meetings and whatnot on the calendar to make sure that we meet that date and that we, it was a hypothetical that was presented yesterday, so we really haven't worked through the calendar completely, but our target date is January the first. And then lastly, city council, by consensus, gave approval to complete the design work on the wastewater treatment plant. We are at sixty percent design right now. We will complete the design work and we'll take that to a hundred percent design and we will seek bids for that construction project. That was approved by council yesterday and then when we have those bids and select contractor and we have those numbers, we will be reporting that information back to council for further decisions and approvals by city council at that time. So that is a lot. That is a tremendous amount of work and some very important decisions that were made yesterday. So today, we have, we're going to, we're going to change gears in terms of the topics that we discussed and our first topic up for this morning is one that I believe I have heard from every city council member about and from probably every resident in the city of Monroe. And that, that has to do with our street maintenance and our street conditions and our street programs and which streets are city streets and which streets are controlled by NCDOT and how does all that work and where do you get information about all of that? And not to steal staff's thunder, but you know, to put it in perspective, a lot of people don't realize that the city of Monroe is responsible for one hundred and seventy-two miles of paved streets. That's a lot. That, that's a lot when you start considering the, the cost of maintaining all that and improving that. So we'll, we'll have, we'll look forward to the presentation by staff in just a moment. We have some guests with us this morning from Union County. Jordan Hanson is their transportation planner and some other folks to talk about Highway Seventy-four, Rocky River Bridge over the rails. And I'm just using that as a, as a very informal way of describing that process or that project, but there are some decisions that city council needs to make and some direction that you need to give regarding that project today. And then state, straight, excuse me, transportation projects through the, the state transportation improvement program, we'll be hearing about that. Lunch today, we will be having the open forum discussion that the mayor talked about and just really engaging in that next steps and where do we go and what are the priorities? I will tell you from, from my perspective as city manager, there are a lot of competing priorities in the city. There are a lot. There are the daily things that have to get done, that are expected to get done, and then there are those things that are going to move the city forward. I will just say this, we have limited resources. So we can't get everything done all at one time. So I will tell you honestly, transparently, I am looking for city council direction on what are your priorities in these, these things that you want us to engage in to move forward with us? And we will take that as a staff and we will get it done. But it is always helpful when council speaks with one voice. The afternoon is going to be devoted to a number of capital projects. We'll hear from the fire department update on the construction project for Fire Station Six and some other construction projects. Pete Navannick is going to bring us an update on the golf course clubhouse renovation, the pro shop renovation and the potential of bringing new activities into the, what we refer to today as the ballroom. We will also hear about the Dow Theater and the Dow Master Plan, a topic that everyone's been interested in and we will get a presentation on that. And then lastly, the, the issue of city, city owned parking in the downtown area. Our downtown continues to grow and, and parking is becoming one of the hottest topics in the downtown area. So absent of a long-term master plan for parking, what do we need to do right now in the short term while we work on the long-term solutions? Okay? Very good. So at this time, I will like to call on Sarah McCauser, our engineering department director, to introduce her topic and the individuals she has with her this morning. And this is transportation and streets pavement condition standards. So Sarah.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. I'm happy to be one of the first ones arriving at lunch, so this is a real streamlined presentation. It's only twelve slides, so I'll leave something out that you have a question about to stop me. Way to the end, whatever your preference is. As far as streets, as I already said, we have a hundred and seventy-one plus miles of city maintained streets and there's about fifty miles of state maintained streets within the city. How do you know? Soon you'll be able to search on the website. There'll be a link to a map. I saw the first iteration of it earlier this week. You'd be able to enter an address or a street name and it'll pop up, it'll, it'll kind of zoom to that area and it'll tell you, it'll be covered whether it's a state maintained or city maintained or private maintained. We do need to do some tweaks to that because there are some streets that are under construction that are, that come out private. And if a homeowner were to see that, they might have some concerns, but it's just because we haven't taken much advantage yet. Most city streets begin and end within the city. Most states continue through, any US or North Carolina route is always a state street. The picture on the left is a stop sign at the intersection of Charlotte Avenue and Ivy Shop. Those are two state maintained streets and those little black signs at the top of the stop sign indicate that. The stop sign on the right is intersection Charlotte Avenue and Oak Street. Oak Street is city maintained streets, that's why you'll only see one of those black SR signs at the top. So that's a good way to, it's not at every intersection that it's a bus stop. It's a good way to tell when you're out riding the streets. And there's a few examples of city maintained streets up there. So the street division, they perform pothole repairs, resurfacing, they install speed cushions, sidewalks, curb to gutter. We have five crews. One crew is a stormwater crew. It's a six-person crew with two street sweepers. That's funded through Stormwater Enterprise. And then we have four crews that are funded through the general fund, two asphalt crews. One is basically dedicated to utility workers, one concrete and then one miscellaneous crew. So for potholes, we have a goal to, anytime we get a pothole that's reported on the city's streets, repair those on the priority street within twenty-four hours and within forty-eight hours on what we call residential streets. We typically, we like patch with potholes, but when that's not available, we do use pothole patch. So our street resurfacing program, we've divided, we've taken twenty-one miles and designated those priority streets. Those are our higher watered streets and the remaining are residential streets. So our goal is to maintain those priority streets, those twenty-one miles on a industry average resurfacing that'd be fifteen to twenty years. But with adding in preservation, that'll change that and that's going to be the main consideration that we're going to try to increase in preservation. There's a pavement condition survey. We typically like to see that done every three years. That would basically lay out an optimized work plan based on the funding that you select and that helps us to choose the streets that we resurface. And we do have two methods for resurfacing. We do an annual resurfacing contract. You can see currently the funding is nine hundred and forty-two thousand, that's variable tax receipts. I think it was sixteen or seventeen when they changed the legislation and we increased from five dollars to thirty dollars. Prior to that, anything above five had to be used for transit. So that started, I think it was a little over seven hundred thousand in sixteen, so that's increased for population per. It says nine hundred thousand dollars in general fund, but this year they did take, I think about eight hundred thousand out of our reserve funds to reserve, to fund resurfacing. And then we allocate two hundred and twenty-seven out of our power bill funding. And the street division is ramping up, getting back into some resurfacing. So the power bill program is administered by the NCDOT. Those are restricted funds, so we have restrictions on what we can use them for. The allocation is seventy-five percent based on population, twenty-five percent based on how many miles you maintain. So this is our average allocation over the last five years and our average expenditures. So you can see in twenty twenty-one, where the expenditures went up, it's been a little over three hundred thousand dollars in the Concord Avenue sidewalk project. And then you see there's kind of a lull in twenty-two and twenty-three. I think that indicates staffing problem, not, not unique to our department, but definitely when you're under staffed, it limits the amount of things you can get done. And you see it trending up from twenty-three to twenty-four. I do expect that to continue. Of those five crews, for many years, we had, the miscellaneous crew was dedicated to stormwater. That's all they did. But recently, I think we have probably less than ten active workers for stormwater, so we're about to the point where we can do some things proactively rather than reactively. Now that does indicate there are some that are in the work, work plan because they can be further engineering or some different details. The, as you can see, we've gotten about a million. You see that is fine. I think that's based on population, different things the state has done. We have several neighborhoods out there that are pitting close so we can take them over so we can increase our mileage, so that will help with the funding too. The population, obviously, since it's based seventy-five percent on population, that really helps with the allocation increase. We talked about earlier this week that the reserve fund balance is 3.2 million. 1.6 million of that is committed to NCDOT and better than cost. And what that means is, and Sean or Travis can correct me if I miss step here, but DOT projects, when they design them, they come with a five-foot wide sidewalk. Anything young that we pay for is better than cost. So for 74 Charlotte Avenue widening, we have, we request a 10-foot wide pulse use pad on one side and eight-foot wide sidewalk on the other side. That's in accordance with our detail manual, so we paid for those increases. And I do have a list at the end of this, if you're curious, as to what that 1.6 commitment looks like. And that, as I said earlier, gives you yesterday's dollars, so there's some inflation there and that, that should rise. This is a breakdown of what we spend Power Bill funds on. You see the biggest chunk is maintenance, that is probably patching. We spend $12,000 a year on, to see sex for them to maintain our crossings. You know the condition of those, so they really could be improved and we reach out to them frequently to get, to get them to improve the crossings. Next biggest chunk is other and that's, we maintain five bridges, so any repairs, so that comes out of that. Curtain gutter, our snow ice equivalent. Transportation improvement projects have recently fitted our part two. We drove in Charlotte Avenue signal installation, which I believe is under construction now. So I think the paving, resurfacing will start to grow as the street division gets back into doing more patching and more resurfacing in-house. And then the maintenance will also, I think, start to increase. This is our past five resurfacing contracts. It goes back to 2019, so we did not do a resurfacing contract in 2022 because we were a little bit understaffed in the workload, but we did just roll those funds forward. And then you see the number of miles resurfaced per contract ranging from a little over three to a little over five. This is our cost per mile breakdown. On the right, you see the liquid asphalt trending in price, getting closely tied to fuel prices. So we are seeing an increase in asphalt cost. That average price per mile is, is, is high, I believe, in the latest contractors, a couple of reasons for that. We resurfaced industrial street, obviously that paved section is much thicker. We replaced the curb gutter, entire curb gutter of several streets. That'll shoot the cost up. We did several short cul-de-sacs and when you translate that out to a per mile cost, that would really exaggerate the cost. So I, I believe it's somewhere around here that, but this is just the hard numbers and you can see a very short line that looks like preservation and do the thing. We will start to ramp up our preservation because that's definitely needed, we'll see in the next presentation. That's pretty much it. There's the, the chart for if you're wondering where that 1.6 is committed to DOT funds. I know it's kind of hard to see up there, but. With that, I'll take any questions and after Steve Lander gives his presentation, I'll come back up. If there's any others.
Yes, sir. Sarah, I have a question. As far as sidewalks, I'm sorry, crosswalks downtown, whose responsibility is that?
So in the past week, administered that, that downtown is typically passed for those funds? It's been kind of a mixed bag in the past, but once they were sold, it kind of fell under downtown, kind of maintaining?
What's the process for you and just for council to know, the process to request potentially crosswalks downtown, specifically across like paint street and things like that?
So I don't remember if we got an encouragement with DOT to do those decorative ones across their streets, but we just submit them to us. So are you referring to the decorative sand?
Yes, ma'am, yes. And then potentially, you know, like some of those that also have the flashing lights and.
The street division has the capability to install those. If they're on the city streets, really easy to go do.
Okay.
Obviously, if, if they're at an intersection, we don't recommend mid-block. But we can also handle that with striking contract. We do an annual restriping contract, so all streets get restriped every other year.
Does it, DOT have a, a standard for, you just said all city streets get restriped every other year, but what about the DOT streets of course?
I'm not sure. Maybe one of, maybe Sean or Travis can answer that. If that's in the annual striking for DOT.
Yeah, we, we're not on a set schedule. That's funding allowed. We have kind of a lot more maintenance funded, this year, next year, a couple of moving wars. I know we've been remarking a lot more orders this year if we have to have funding for them to do talks that.
So no set schedule, just kind of that's funding allowed?
What is the process for reporting potholes?
So you can, there's another on the website. There's also the reported issue, which a lot of people frequently use. You can call the street division, you can call me, you can send me an email, you can send John Goff an email. It gets to the engineering department, they'll take care of it.
And it's 40 now, or 10?
That's the goal. Now that you're raining, if you got a, if you got a couple rainy days or, and the reason a lot of times you can't get hot mix is the winter's on the plane shutdown. So we're going to patch it, the cold mix, that does not last as well as hot mix. And if you have a rainy season, it's going to pop right back out. So you're going to need to report it again.
I, I have a question with, as we start taking over some of these subdivisions and some of the developments that come on, do you have an idea of how many miles that's going to add per year or, or is it just something that's?
We could get it, if we could get it, if you would like, because when we, when we evaluate streets, we take another PANX, we get mileage. That is something we have. I don't really have that number.
And do you have a, a goal in mind for how much you, how many miles you want to get done each year? How many do you want to get repaid?
That will be kind of in the next presentation and that is based off the funding level. So it, and it's based off your goal, what's your levels or where do you want to be?
Sure.
So, and, and he's got plenty of funding and what that goal looks like and what that'll take to get us there.
For sure. Thank you.
Sarah, I have a question. What is our process for our frequency of street assessments?
Three years. Every three years.
So you kind of go around, just every three years, kind of checking on them?
And, and the next presentation is what that survey entails.
Okay.
And the delivables from that.
So just every three years, so y'all do anything?
Yeah, we did get a little off at some point, but I believe we've done pretty, pretty regularly for the last 10 years, every three years, pretty on, on par.
Is the 601 widening for 2030, that's north? Six of what, north?
Yes, yes.
So it is not in conjunction with the bridge and regular intersection?
Those are separate projects. So Concord Avenue Bridge and then one of those, I don't have all the details on here, but I love that these projects are in Sean's presentation. So he'll, he'll, he'll unveil that as well. The 601 bridge is on there, I'm just not sure which U project it is.
And when money is refunded, like, like it says, James Hamilton Room, you get to use that at your discretion?
So that was refunded because the construction didn't happen as soon as they thought it was going to be? They're going to be asking for it back soon.
Thank you.
Sarah, one, one, one street and one bridge that frequently comes up in the conversation is Pine Dell. So what, what is the, what's the status of the bridge replacement and timeline?
So we are currently requiring necessary treatments in Ridgeway. But there were five property owners, I believe, who required a couple of those originally. So as soon as we acquire all of those, we'll be able to, er, erosion control permit. And that's one of the last permits we need to be able to bid that. So I anticipate that we'll be out for construction bid, I think, later this year or the next year.
Well, next question. At one point, was that not a roundabout plan for John Goff and 74?
Not 74. There's a reduced conflict intersection and that is coming with the widening.
It's just the right one. Yes, ma'am.
With that, I'll introduce Steve Lander. He's with Withers Ravenel and he conducted our latest pavement condition survey.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Mayor, council. It's my pleasure to present to you the work that we have done for the pavement condition survey and the analysis. And so I'm just going to jump right into my slides. Just a little overview about our company and the folks that worked on it. So of my 31 years in my career, I've been involved with pavement management. And, and it's kind of interesting that I really, really like it and I didn't plan on being a pavement engineer, but this is what, what happened. So over that 21 years, I worked for a pavement company for about three years and I've helped manage over 140 pavement condition surveys, including the city's, since 2014. So anyway, I have become an expert in asphalt. I really like it. Rob Holland and I, we both joined Withers Ravenel at the same time, four years ago. I'm going to tell you a little story about how we came up with our plan and, and being able to serve municipalities, just like the city of Monroe. So, you know, it's interesting what we do in our careers and I was telling Sarah, well, my wife and I are on vacation, I'm looking at roads, taking pictures of things. So it's real, and my daughter, if I ask her about medium lock cracking, she understands. So anyway, entrenched in pavement management, I'm rating roads all the time. So just 35 municipalities who Withers Ravenel has done work for in a capacity of either pavement condition survey, putting the other contract documents, do a construction inspection and offering guides to manage the roads most effectively. So this is something that Rob Holland and I developed on our first weekend with Withers Ravenel and it's, these are the components of a successful pavement management program. And Rob and I would like to call this the circle of success. And it starts with a plan, right? And so I really, you know, commend you for getting together for a couple of days and, and talking about making the city of Monroe great. And, and this is the plan, right? So where do you want to be? What is the vision of the city? You know, and a lot of folks, they go to municipalities and they say, we need a pavement condition survey or we need this, we need it. Okay, so let's sit back and what, what is it that we want the roads to look like? What kind of treatments do we want to use? How are we going to get there? And so it's from this plan that we're able to determine what kind of pavement condition survey we're going to conduct. And we've been conducting the same pavement condition survey for years. The lifecycle modeling, being able to take the information from the pavement condition survey, which I know it sounds like a lot of fun, but we drove every segment of street in the city. And it's from that information that we, we developed a PCI, Pavement Condition Index, for each street segment and then a composite PCI score for the entire network. So taking that information, putting it into a lifecycle model so that we can determine where we are now and where we're going to be in the future. And so we, you know, when we set goals, what does it take to get to the goal that we're trying to achieve, the vision that we're trying to see, achieve for the city? And then part of that is, and Sarah talked about, is the different maintenance activities. And typically municipalities have used one maintenance activity, it's all fixing potholes, but it's also, it's resurfacing. Back in the day when asphalt was really cheap, you could resurface everything and get away with it. But now with the cost of asphalt going up, it's, we're, we're needing to use software to determine what's the effect of applying different treatments to the roadway network. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit. We can have all this information and if we don't have concise bid documents, it doesn't go right in the field. So it's really important to make sure you have concise bid documents and full-time construction inspection, right? You know, there, there's a lot of good contractors out there, but there's some that may be not doing what they need to do in the field. So we need to, to keep an eye on, to make sure that things are getting built the way we expect. And this is something that I see a lot of, is that after we do the job, sometimes we forget, you know, we, maybe the person who is in charge of the project has retired, right? We say, when did we pave that street? And it's really important to, to, to note it and keep track of it because we want to know how things are performing. And, and it really comes down to dollars per square yard a year. That's the number we're looking for. And if, if a treatment doesn't perform like we expect, that number goes up. And we want to keep, we want to keep that number down. And this is something that really excited me, having been relating, you know, just do a lot of pavement work. What about the utilities that affect the pavement, right? The water, the sewer, the stormwater? So the things that I'm going to be talking about for pavement can also be done for the water, sewer, stormwater facilities. But, you know, so that's that common corridor approach. And then, and then the funding part. So Withers Ravenel is a champion in North Carolina in finding funding in the form of grants and low interest rate loans. Not so much for pavement, sorry. It's, they're not, it's not as readily available for water and sewer. So, you know, monies that you're spending there, you can find grants and loans to hopefully have some money and then you can pave some more roads. So that is the circle of success. These are the things that we offer as a consulting firm. So jumping into our pavement condition survey, we call this our phase one. Federal Highway Administration, FHWA recommends that a pavement condition survey be conducted every two to three years. And, and why is that? Some folks wait a long time. But the reason for that is that when you're spending a lot of money on your network, you want to know what's, what's happening. Are, are we gaining ground? Are we losing ground? And then also two is that when the city starts to get into using more preservation treatments, the list of streets that we come up with is not as effective after year three. Roads just don't perform as well sometime as, as we might think. And so it's really good to have an updated survey. It's unbiased. I don't live in Monroe, so I'm not trying to get my buddy's road paved or anything like that. So it's a, it's an objective look at the streets. And then taking that information, like I said, and putting it into a software and analyzing the data and also too, as Sarah was talking about, developing work plans with actual streets that make up the information provided for the, that, that, the graph for the Pavement Condition Index. And we generated a report as well as part of that pavement condition survey work. So like I said, we go out in the field and we have a two-person experienced crew. We ride the roads at about five to 10 miles an hour. And you can see that, that form on the right and it's, it's the form that we use while we're rating the roads. So both people have to agree on the distresses that they're collecting and they also have to agree when they see the PCI score, which is dynamic, that they, that it agrees with what they initially see, right? So, and, and I'm just telling you that we are painstaking about collecting quality data to make decisions from. So Monroe maintains roughly about 171 miles of road. Withers Ravenel conducted the pavement condition survey in February 2024. And these are the seven distresses that we collected. I could talk a long time about these and I think you'll be glad that I'm not going to be talking about them, but these distresses are very common to most rating methodologies. The methodology we use, which has been used for the last three surveys, is the long-term pavement performance methodology, which is recommended by FHWA. And it's from those distresses that we're able to develop PCI score. So this is a map of the city and it's just showing, it's kind of like a heat map, right? And you can see there's, there's a lot of reds, right? And that's what is really kind of driving the, the Pavement Condition Index, that PCI. So about 44% of the network that is in poor condition, those are your reds. And we have a picture here of Pine Dell Avenue with some common distresses, you know, potholes and, and alligator cracking, so structural problems in the road. So kind of a common picture that you might see on some of those roads that are in poor condition. This is an interesting graph because it shows from 2016 to 2024. This graph is a little different than what you have in your packet. Sarah and I both noticed that there was something not quite right and I fixed it late last night, so updated the slide. But what it does do, it shows that there is a trend. You know, typically, we want to have the roads going to the very good, not going to the very poor and, and poor. And so the roads are starting to trend towards the poor condition. So our findings is that the, the city has an overall PCI, Pavement Condition Index score of 65. And so based on. And so based on, you know, our condition state here, it's a, it's in poor condition, the overall network. And you can see, based on this table here of where the city of Monroe sits in relation to other municipalities. So there are some that are worse, and there's some that are better. The next slide shows a comparison, although it goes a little deeper. It shows this dollars per mile of what folks are spending. And then there's some interesting takeaways. First, the city of Monroe is spending more money. So it used to, you know, back, back, back in 2022, the city was spending about $6,433 per mile, and it has upped the ante to about $12,000 a mile. If, if we look at this, that, and I, and I manage the networks here, and so I'm very familiar with these things. And I've worked with Apex, and you can see that they're spending about almost $17,000 per mile. The price of asphalt and finding contractors has really increased the cost of doing work. If I was here two years ago, I would be telling you that it'd take about $10,000 a mile to manage your network. But today, it's, it's 15, 20,000, and it can be up per mile to manage the roadway network. And so some of the takeaways, so you see Apex is up at that 16. So Fuquay Arena, you look, you say, hey, they're only spending 3,200. They have a lot of new miles. Fuquay Arena has received 50 new roads into their roadway network. And that's something that you have to keep in mind. When new roads enter the network, they're usually in good, you know, fingers crossed, they're in good shape, right? And, you know, so the inspection was done, and things were built right. But it produces a false bump in the overall PCI score. So this is, it's, it's an interesting takeaway, but things are, you know, the, the cost of asphalt and finding contractors has been a major factor in why things are going up the way they are. These are the maintenance activities that we recommended in the report. So quickly going through these, they're 81 to 100, those are roads that are in good shape. So we're applying Preservation Prevent, which are rejuvenators, and I'm going to talk about these in pictures actually in the next slide. And then, and patching, as Sarah had talked about. 65 to 81 is Preservation Prevent, and that's a thin lift treatment. A lot of times, it's micro-surfacing, which the city doesn't use yet, but it's a good idea to start thinking about that. 26 to 65 is rehabilitation, and then roads that need to be rebuilt are from zero to 26. So these are the repair activities, and some, starting in the upper left, those rejuvenators. And some people would say, it's, you know, witch's water, or snake, you know, snake oil or something. And it's a, it's a rejuvenator that actually penetrates the pavement. And I am a witness of this. I've seen it used in areas. It goes now pink, and by the next day, you can't tell that anything was done, but it actually penetrates the asphalt. It puts back a part of the asphalt that dissipates when you heat it up and when you put it down. And we've all been to the, the paving site, you see the white smoke coming off of the asphalt. Those are maltese, and it's part of the asphalt that makes it pliable. But when we put rejuvenators into the pavement, it, it gives it back its pliability, and then it holds the fines, the little pieces and the stone in the asphalt. So it protects the surface. It really works. It's one of the cheaper maintenance activities that you use. And also too, is that there's not much to complain about. And that's one of the things about some of these treatments, where they're not, when folks aren't getting their roads paved, they might complain because it looks a little different than asphalt. But this is something that's low impact and, but a high value. And the next, to the upper right, is your micro-surfacing, and this could be other treatments. There's a lot of treatments on this that are out there, but it's a thin lift. And these roads are a little, you know, a little more cracking. You have to do some prep work before, you have to patch for them, you have to do crack sealing. But this goes over top and protects the surface. The next is your rehabilitation, which most folks are familiar with, where you're building up the road, putting back asphalt. And the last, which is the most expensive, is reconstruction, which is in the form of full-depth reclamation, which I know the city has done quite a bit of, where you're grinding up that asphalt and stone, putting a determined amount of cement in with water. It sets up, and you have a brand-new base which you pave upon. So the key to all these maintenance activities is that we're trying to create perpetual pavement. So Rob and I did a lot of study, and we found that when a road gets put down, usually it's about year 15 or 17 that you're at a 65, where you can't do anything else to it. And so what we want to do is we want to, so when we pave something, so we're looking at a case here, where in 2025, a road gets paved. The year after, we put rejuvenators on it, and then five years later, we do another round of rejuvenators, and we might have another round. You know, we'll have pavement condition surveys after this, but maybe you can get away with doing more. But then we start introducing micro-surfacing a couple of times, and you may even do three. And so the key is, is that maybe, you know, instead of having 17 years where you're having to come and mill it back up, you're pushing it out 25 to 30 years. And, and what we're trying to do is create perpetual pavement. We're trying to protect the base at all costs. Really, when surface water gets into the base, it really wreaks havoc. It causes all sorts of problems with the base, and causes base problems. So we're going to have to mill this pavement up, but hopefully we kept that water out. We're only doing small base repairs, and then we pave it back and we start over again. So that's perpetual pavement. That's the cheapest way to manage your network. You're managing high on the curve for the least cost. But when you do, when all you're doing is the worst, you're managing at the lowest level of service for the highest cost. So we're trying to, it's a paradigm shift. These are the unit costs that we use for the analysis, and those are the treatments that we just discussed. You know, the, the cost of doing things has gone up. And the key on the right there is that dollars per square yard a year, we want to try to stay high on the curve. And, you know, I like to use the analogy of changing oil on the car, right? Nobody ever saves their oil change money to buy a motor for their car. But sometimes that's what we do with some of these assets. And so there's things that we can do all along to, to make sure that the pavement stays intact, and then we're getting the most life out of the pavement. So at this point, we'll talk about the analysis that we performed in Brightly Predictor Software. It's a leading pavement management software. And it's part of our beginning at Withers Rabinell. Rob and I went out and we looked at North Carolina streets, and we looked at how things perform, each of the maintenance activities. And we also developed a deterioration curve, which is for North Carolina. So it's as close as that you're going to get without having modeled your own data. And that's really kind of the goal at the end of this, is that when other years come, when we start looking at, when we do another pavement condition survey, what happened to the streets? And then we can change our models so that we can have better answers to make sure that, that we're on. And I'll have you know that we, we were able to look back at Holly Springs, and we said that they'd be a 76 in, in two years, and they were at a 76 in two years. So anyway, high fives for the geeks in the office, but. So, so we, we modeled five budget scenarios. So we modeled the current, and then we modeled the maintain, the PCI. And each one of them has a parentheses, the dollar figure that's associated with each. And then we met with the city staff to determine, hey, what were some of the goals that the city may want to look at in order to maintain their streets at a certain level of service? So going through the slide, and some, some folks will call this the money slide, because it really shows in graphic format of what it looks like for the overall network, based on the different funding levels. So these, these slides here are pie charts, and we have the different condition states. These are pretty self-explanatory. We have our current condition, which we're going to compare each of the different scenarios that we ran. And so, you know, the takeaway here, I guess you can see my, oh, you can't see it. Anyway, so the, the very poor has increased quite a bit, and this is over a 10-year period. We could run out more, we ran it for 10 years. So you can see that the very poor has increased significantly with the current level of funding to maintain the current condition. This is what the overall pie chart, so you're starting to see a lot more green, which is, which is good, and less of the reds as we move through, you know, PCI score of 70, again, a reduction in the very poor pavement. And granted, you know, so one thing about the software is that, that because it's so expensive to do those reconstructs, it really doesn't want to pick those. And we know that you can't just not do those, because people live there, and people, you know, hey, why don't you fix my street? So there is a balanced approach, where you're having to do some of those worse streets, which is software typically doesn't like to select. This is a PCI goal of 70 over that 10-year period, so a little more, some more greens. And then an 80, where a good portion of your network is in very good or good condition. So wrapping it up in recommendations moving forward. You know, so based on what we saw from the pavement condition survey and the analysis, that we recommend an increase in funding if the city determines that its goal is to at least maintain or improve the condition of the roadway network. You guys, if you're on board with the, the cycle of pavement condition surveys, because it's a huge investment, right? This, this roadway network, one of the larger investments owned by the city, so we want to make sure that we're being good stewards of this roadway network. Testing as needed is important to make sure that, that things are going to perform the way we expect. And we talked about utilizing the full toolbox, and I'll, I'll have you know that not all agencies are receptive to all maintenance activities. And I think whenever we offer a new maintenance activity, everybody has to be educated about it. Why are we doing these things? And the thing about with the micro-surfacing, so sometimes it can really look good, and sometimes it can look kind of rough on day one. Paving looks great on day one usually, and so some people might have problems with it. Over time, though, the ones that look rough, they wear in, and nobody can tell the difference. So when people understand why we're making changes to the program, it's so that we can touch more roads, we can maintain the network at the highest level of service. Instruction history, how are things performing? If things aren't performing like we expect, we need to do something different, right? We need to monitor, monitor this. You know, and I think going back to that circle of success, each year, we need to monitor how things are performing all around, right? To, to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck, utilizing the results of the software, and then integrating with other assets, which, these are some slides, one's from Clayton, and the bottom one is for Morrisville. You know, my guys are out rating the road, roads in the top slide, and they said, Steve, the pavement's brand new, how do you rate this? And, because the water's coming through the pavement. You know, there's, you know, there's an old water main that's been compromised because of the roller hitting it. You know, we want to try to minimize this, and, you know, I think I can say with certainty that everybody would agree, that nobody likes a new cut on a new asphalt, right? And so if we can minimize that as much as possible, and that's where being able to model those other assets and have the other assets worked on before we work on the roads is, is the game. And knowing the plan of water, sewer, stormwater, so that we don't have to come back and, you know, dig up a brand-new pavement. All righty, receptive to questions.
I have a question, but to recognize, like the top municipalities, Apex, Fuquay, Moore, all of these are Wake County municipalities, and they're pretty new with regards to the development. That's what happened in these areas. What is the correlation? And I notice their PCIs are a lot higher as well than, and I think I heard you say their PCIs are getting more funding, right? So with these newer developments, or these newer municipalities, how do we compete with those when they were more suburban and they're now kind of adding new streets? Like, how is it, kind of noticing some of these other more municipalities that's kind of been around for a while, and you can really have all these Raleigh municipalities at the top, which I know that are pretty newly developed. How do we compete with those when we know that they're building new streets, and they're getting more funding than the people who's kind of been around for a while?
Yeah, so it, you know, in Apex, you know, then having worked with them, you know, they're aware that they need to spend money. And in the, in that area, there's a soil type called rhasic soil. So like Moore still has it, the whole, their whole network. So they have to spend that money to keep up with it. So it has to do with soil types, has to do with pavement widths. You know, so Morrisville, the average width of pavement is 27 feet. So it really plays a big part in how much it costs to maintain it. So, you know, whether it be, you know, the soil type, or pavement widths, or, you know, new networks, everybody's got the same thing, you know? So these newer networks are getting a lot new more roads. It's going to happen for them as the, you know, as they age, right? That they're going to have to maintain these things, and hopefully maintain higher on the curve. So I don't know if it's, it's really competing so much as more of a, like a comparison to just, this is what other folks are spending, and, you know, and something, you know, that you're in the ballpark as far as how folks are spending money. Did I?
Well, and it's written for all, so, so they're getting federal dollars because of their, their higher PC, their higher PCR, is that correct?
So, and so, and everybody's the same in North Carolina. There's Powell Bill funding, and then there's general funds. And so Powell Bill is based on population and mileage. So that, and so that's just a formula that the DOT allocates that money. So as far as getting any federal money for payments, it's very difficult.
I have a question that might be more of a Lisa Strickland and Sarah McAllister question. From understanding this, right, if council wanted to fund funding 5 million, our Powell Bill share is still a million dollars. So that would be looking at $4 million, which is 6.9 cents of collected adware. Is that, is that a good math problem, or am I making this complicated?
So one point of clarity to that is Powell Bill funding is used to basically fund our street conditions. So this ask is in addition to.
So this is 8.6. I figured it both ways, so it's really 8.6 cents.
Right. And Powell Bill funds get used differently by every municipality. Some of them use it to fund their employees, and some of them use it 100% to fund resurfacing. In the end, I feel like it all shakes out. The need is the need. So it's just the goal, what level of service you want.
So this is a Lisa question. Could we afford 8.6 cents of collective flowing towards a $5 million budget of the roads? Lisa Strickland.
I guess that would be depending on whether or not council would want to raise taxes.
So the answer is no, Kim.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paying cents to help with that, that would be fine.
Thank you, that was a quick answer. Thank you.
I think there's, I think there's a part two to that. So, so our, our adware tax base has averaged 7% growth?
Yeah, just about, maybe five, five to seven.
All right. So, so when we say 7% growth, convert that into pennies. Is that a penny?
Probably yes, maybe two.
So if your, if your adware tax base is growing by, let's just say a penny and a half, okay? A penny and a half, and yesterday, a penny is worth 179. Okay. So, so there you go. So a quarter of an inch is what you're generating in new funds that can be placed to some. So how those new funds get used each year, you know, determine, are determined based on council priorities, okay? So. So what we really need to know is how does this rank in your priorities?
Is there any scenario where the budget could go up without an increase in taxes? Is there any flexibility with that, 2 million to 5? Is there any scenario where that works?
Not really, because you're competing against increasing cost of employee salaries, pension, healthcare, so everything else inflationary. Yeah.
So in debt service or other capital markets?
To be fair, it's not calculating at the same time this rate right here. If we were to say this is an AD PCI goal, how, and this is a tenure analysis, correct?
Correct.
So we're not looking at it from the perspective of the potential growth in population at the same exact time. So what you could potentially do is split the difference there, and then with the population increase, eventually reevaluate that in 5, 10 years, and then might change.
Yeah, so this study gets redone every 2 years. So it really becomes important to have this discussion every 2 years. You know, you set a goal, you set an expectation for pavement condition, you fund it, you reevaluate it, are we meeting the expectation? What needs to change? And you move on. But it's more of a dynamic than a static type of a program. And not, you know, I feel like it's probably, this is my perspective, it's been treated more of a static-type program than more of a dynamic program. And we need to, I think, change that.
So our goal wasn't to be at 65, correct? I mean, nobody wants, I mean, we don't want to be at 65. And to be, well, the goal would be to be as high as you can. That would be the goal for the cheapest amount of money that you can. So the idea of staying at 65 and having to put a billion, 1.75 million in just to stay at 65, it's probably going to be an issue to just maintain something that I think we've all can agree we have to have a merit quality approach. I think the citizens are, I mean, they're calling. So just to maintain a 65 is 1.75. Am I reading that correctly? So we're going to put a million, you know, almost $2 million into it just to stay where we're at. That doesn't seem logical to me. Yeah, right. Well, and to teeter on the edge at a 65. It's not like it's a 65 going up, it's a 65 going down. So, you know, my thought process would be to try to get to 70, and that's a 70, hopefully going up and not a 65 going down. Now we just have to figure out how we do that. I mean, if we as a collective person decide that, but we have to do something about the roads. Now, the question I have is this. The, to get us to the point where we can use these treatments, and I mean, we're going to have to do some work on the roads to get them to the point where we can use these treatments that you're speaking of, right? You can't use this over a pothole. We're going to have to patch things, fix things, get things to the point where, is that baked into the cake with this?
Yeah, because not all the network is at 65, you know, so there are...
No, yet.
Yeah, right, so there are, right, not yet. And so there are roads that are ready to receive those treatments now.
Right.
And so, yeah, I'm sorry. So, you know, and as we do more work, that they become those new streets and that we're maintaining those streets.
But for the extras, what, 50? I mean, to get to 70 is 2.25 million. We're already putting in 1.75 to maintain. So I guess my point is this, we can at least hold your static where we're at in the roads and start to bring us other roads up. I guess what I don't want to run into is, is all of a sudden it becomes, we have to do all this fixing to get to this 70 that we didn't anticipate. Do you understand what I'm getting, I just want to make sure it's all baked into the cake.
Yeah, it's all baked in, yes.
Okay, so this is, that 2.25 million is going to get us to, in the next 10 years, going forward.
And I think a good point to bring up here is that we did not include inflation in...
Right.
And so, and the inflation over the last couple of years has been astronomical. So it's as good as we can do right now, but if, yes, it is baked in.
I just want to make sure I'm thinking about this clearly. Do we need to decide that we're going to continue to have this type of analysis on a consistent basis? This is the first piece here.
How long have we been doing this? How many years?
Since 2013.
So it is, for us to see this, do we need to decide that piece? I have a question to clear.
We do this every 3 years.
Okay. All right, so we are on that, we are on that rotation.
Something every 3 years.
Okay. But we don't have anything, we don't have anything right now to move us forward beyond where we are right now in our current road situation. Is that right? We know what our budget is per year, but there hasn't been anything, or we haven't decided anything.
This is a very underfunded.
Right, I understand that. So a piece to decide is what we do from here.
So if you think about it like this, this is done every 2 years for, every how long, okay? The variable that's changing is the cost of doing this per mile. So as the costs go up, you do it per miles, your condition deteriorates because you can't maintain that. So as that cost has gone up and we have done fewer, fewer, fewer miles, you know, over the last few cycles, now that gets us to the point we are today. So it really is, it is one of those, another one of those, we're at a crossroads, making the decision to, you know, bringing it to your attention, right? Do we, how do we maintain? What's your expectation for this program?
I guess what, I would say, I think that we can all agree that we need to do much better than what we've been doing. If, and this is my perspective, if we would, you know, if you wanted a decision on which one of these, you want us to go, I would actually request what that tax difference would be, right? So that if we said we were going to go to 75, would it be an increase in tax and how much? And would that be able to somewhere be offset by moving funds? Or when we move to 80, there's no way around it. We would be, I would want that information before.
So that's a really good question. So in setting, in setting the goal, city council setting the expectation, and putting together the budget for this next year, this would be like one of the first things that goes in. And then we would, we would build a budget based on, you know, you have, this is a foundational piece. You know, it's not an add-on at the end. This is a foundational piece, and everything else gets adjusted accordingly. So it, we could tell you what, in terms of how many pennies is going to be just in this scenario, but I wouldn't say that that is going to be the definitive answer at the end of the day, because it depends on how those funds are allocated throughout the pipeline.
Let me ask you this question as well. The difference between a 65 and a 70, what is that? If I'm riding down the road, what's the difference between a 65 and a 70?
So it's just less cracking on the road. And it might not be perceptible, but hopefully that you've treated enough of the roads that folks complain about.
So if these treatments, obviously if we use these, they're going to prevent future crab, I mean, we're preserving what we have, is where I'm trying to get to.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So the difference between an 80 and a 65 is what? Am I going to notice that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you're driving down the road, will you notice that there's significantly less cracking? And so that would be my question, is just to make sure that we're doing something that the citizens are going to understand why we're paying the money for. Instead of just saying, well, you know, it's not what cracking is about. We're maintaining, so we're going to have to dig something up in 5 years, and we're going to do it in 10 or 15. And that's something that the citizen asks why we're spending this money, we can tell them why we're spending the money.
And it may be worth for the council to drive around and look at the different rates.
I wouldn't know a 65 from a 80. I mean, I'm sure I would if you tell me that's a 80, and my street's a 65, but I guess that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Absolutely, it's a, it's a great point. You know, what is the 70, right? It's like, but when you see it, and when you see an 80, you'll...
You know a 15 that you ride on.
Oh, yeah, you know, a 40 and a 30.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Another piece to this, council, you know, if we, nobody wants to raise taxes, but if that, if it comes to that, at least we know why. And I think the constituents will understand the reasons why. I mean, our goals are in good condition, and if we're raising taxes to combat that, then...
We may not.
We may not. So this is where I would ask you.
If we had, that would be something that they can see and understand, that this is the reason why.
That would be intentional.
Right. So this is what I would ask the council. It's like, I need to know what your expectation is for pavement condition.
75.
Okay. And then let us point back to you as we start the budget development, how that's going to happen, okay?
So do we want a 75 or 80?
To your, to your point, 75 or 80, you know, there could be a couple of different strategies on how we stop the deterioration. And it may be an aggressive 1-year paving program, okay? And then we level it back off in year 2 to more of a maintenance, but you make one, you know, you make a big investment upfront. But that's just, that's just an idea, you know? Really, we can see what we can afford to do in that regard, but that would be a strategy.
One of the things I think you may prioritize, and you may be able to shed some light on this, we need to at least, treating these roads are going to hold them at a certain level. We need to find the roads that we have that are satisfactory, and we need to treat them so that they don't go below, because that's what's happening here. So if that makes any sense, at least on all the good roads that we have, too, we can catch everything else up, no matter what. And the difference between a 70 and a 75 is $750,000, and that's taxpayer money that comes from us. So I mean, that's something to really think about. But in reality, I mean, you know, I just want to know that there's going to be a perceptible difference between a 75 and a 70 and a 60. You understand what I'm saying? I want to make sure when people drive down the road, they realize where their money is.
Yeah, so you, with the treatments that are higher on the curve, you can treat more roads because you're not paying $40 square yard, you're paying $6 square yard, so it will be perceptible.
If it were of assistance to kickstart the program, would council entertain liquidating some of the hundreds of undeveloped parcels the city owns to create some cash?
As...
The city of Monroe owns over 100 pieces of undeveloped property. Would council consider reviewing the viability of that ownership and perhaps liquidating some of that to create a lot of cash immediately to kickstart the program?
Would it be sufficient enough to be able to...
As part of the manager's consideration. I mean, if you want...
I can't answer or respond to that right now. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what we can come back with, without having to sell anything. See where we can, like, just like a home budget. If the electricity bill goes up, then we have to take down, you know, some of the other things that we purchased maybe at the grocery store. But we have to do something. Let's see where we can get to, how close we can get to that way before we start selling or giving or doing anything else. Let's just see where the numbers fall.
What's the consensus? Are we at 70, 75, 80?
Well, I think what I hear as a consensus is you want the best street condition possible for what we can afford, what we can afford once we know what the...
That's the key language there, what we can afford, right? Because we still have to be good stewards with what we already have in our spending and things like that, too.
Right.
And I think that that's where for me to make any educated decision, I have to be more educated in where our money is being spent. And at the time, and where things wouldn't be off the table, what councilman Carr's saying, but what would that overall impact be? Because it's also not as simple as, let's just raise taxes for the roads, because there are things, and that's what we're hearing in this discussion, right? That we're going to want to, you know, do more everywhere. And so it might look like it's 1 cent, but I don't want to walk out of here with another 5 to 10 cents tax rate.
And we're not, we're not even remotely suggesting, I'm checking, all I'm looking for is, you know, what is your expectation?
This is a priority. This is going to be one of the first things in the budget.
Absolutely.
Got you.
So we will, working with Sarah and her staff, with all of our financial folks, we'll bring back a plan to improve it to the highest level we can within our ability to afford that. And we'll give you, we'll give you, here's what we can do, and but maybe here's, here's an option.
Yeah, options.
Okay, here's an option, if it's true. A stretch goal, okay? We're going to give you the basic level of expectation, and we're going to give you a stretch goal.
Yeah, all right. So like, if we want 80, 75 to 80, what does that look like? And then what are the options to get there?
Yep. We appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
Good consensus, yeah. Okay. You got this? Sarah?
Sarah, you got that? Okay. I have one more question. As these, as the developments get built, and we at some point will be taking over each, most of those, you and I have had this discussion about revising, going through, looking at engineering standards for what is built in those developments to make sure that we're ahead of the game and that we're not getting something, I'm not even saying so far because it can't be, it's at our, at our standards, but can we set our standards higher so that when those do come online for us, it becomes easier for us to maintain those? Is that something that you would be able to do?
That's a lot of work. I'm sorry.
Well, I would say, and I haven't got the bridge material, but the House bill that was just turned over, it had a clause in there that said we can't require anything more than the NMT curve. So they're already taking steps in that direction to restrict us. So I'd say it would be difficult, and I mean, that's a fight we do need to fight in the legislature to be able to maintain our current concern.
That's right.
Might be one of those, we're writing them up, maybe we already have.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Sarah, before we move to the next, the next item, you've got several staff members here with you. Would you mind introducing these folks back here?
Sure. And I, Bill, our ex, our new land developer.
How about y'all stand up and let city council know who you are?
And he did a lot of this presentation and kept me from going into weeds, so I really appreciate his efforts. Chad also, Chad's long.
Will's job is...
Land development engineering manager.
Land development engineering manager, and he's... Development engineering manager, and he's, he's relatively new?
Yeah, he's been here about a month now. So it was good to have him to do this presentation, because he kept it really streamlined and asked from a fresh perspective, because?
And Will's background?
His background is, he was the VP for BOSS, so he's, he's very well-versed in asphalt and paving contracts, so we are happy to have him. And he is not scared by the amount of money we can throw at him. So me and Chad were a little bit of, well, we might need a consultant to help us manage this, because this is a lot of testing, a lot of putting the contract together, a lot of work goes into that, but he's not too scared of it, so we're, we think we're going to be able to take it on. And then Johnny Paul's back there, he's our street superintendent.
Go back to Chad, Chad, Chad is our?
Chad is a civil engineering, pro the engineering department. He helps with all kinds of things, he's kind of a catch-all, and he's really a support position for that management position. And then Johnny Paul's the street superintendent. So I think?
Wait, say. Is Johnny Paul the, the, the jack-of-all-trades? And, and I'll tell you, if you, Johnny is a can-do, get-it-done kind of guy, and, and if you ever need anything done with regards to things that are under his purview, I mean, it just takes a phone call and it gets them. We appreciate all three of you, but, and Johnny, you've got a fantastic crew of guys that are out there every day. In fact, it, you remember the storm we had here just eight weeks ago, and, and it blew a bunch of limbs down in the streets, and there was just trash, leaves, and sticks, and everything in the roadway, and Johnny's crew was, crew was out there picking all that stuff up, in the rain and getting wet, and making sure those drains were unclogged, and, and all that kind of thing, so they, they are out there in the thick of it every day.
And I, we have one of the more capable street divisions of many of the local municipalities around there, there's a lot of things they can do very well, and I would put them on tomorrow, or better than some contractors.
Well, we're thinking for you, too.
Let's do it.
We always say five minutes, so we'll do a 10-minute recess there.
Okay, we'll come back in 10 blocks, okay?